...
... Public art display, public policy award. Are you gonna announce that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, do we wanna do item three of the Donnelly Park Playground project first?
Donnelly Park Playground.
Yeah. Admittedly, it's hard when there's two chairs at one meeting, and so we kinda don't know exactly.
We're flexible.
I like it.
Well, thank you for having us here today. We were fortunate enough to participate in a service project this last weekend at Turlock Sunrise Rotary, and we had a lot of the Pittman basketball team and a lot of help I'd like to recognize. So please, can I get the helpers to stand up to be recognized? So Pittman, please stand up. We were teasing the kids, you know, we were out there because we wanted to be hopefully, you know, they were out there because Coach told them to be, but hopefully they learned a good lesson and will soon be out there because they want to give back. So anyways, I have some pictures I'd like to share, and again, I'd like to thank the Parks Department. Eric and team did a great job supporting us, so it was a fun workday, we had a lot of fun. So I have a couple, you know, who is Rotary, so as you know, there are two Rotary groups in Turlock. We're the Sunrise Groups, we're the Early Birds, we get up and get going early, but a great organization and one I'm sure you've seen over the years. Causes, many different causes, education and supporting local economies, but one of the big ones for our group is supporting our local community. So we do a lot more of our local service projects, we feel that is the most important to our membership. So our workday was really replacing the tiles and doing a lot of weatherproofing at Donnelly Park. Again, we asked the kids, how many of you have played at Donnelly Park when you were young? Many of them raised their hand, some of them say, "I still do," so we found that to be great. But I have some pictures I'd like to share. So here we got started, we had a great work crew, and we started at 7:00 AM, so the kids were there, they were ready to go, they did a great job. Some of the projects, so this is kinda what we had when we started, the tiles, as you know, the tiles have been damaged for quite a few years. They were a project that the group did many years ago, so we did a lot of repair work through the day. So here's a couple snapshots as we went through it. This was the welcome sign, what it looked like. We had some helpers up there doing some painting, and again, at the end of the day, just a much brighter, a great welcome and entrance to the park for all the kids, so it turned out great. The building blocks, another one, needed a little work here. Got a lot of good help there, some steady hands, and at the end of the day, we had some nice clean blocks again, so great work by the kids. Some of our Rotarians took on this project, just damage, and you know, we're always wondering, why would anyone do all the damage, but apparently there was enough there throughout the day. And we replaced all the broken areas, we caulked them, we painted, and by the end, everything looks brand new, so a great touch-up there at the park. Waterproofing, well, that is no joke, that's a big project, so a lot of the kids helped with the waterproofing. So we went out, we had a lot of teams out there, a lot of handwork, so they went at it all day. They were all over the park. The city crew chipped in, they had a little more industrial work there, so they had some heavy-duty sprayers, but they really got with it also, and we got it all done. Our coaches, again, we got them to work too. Not only did they require the students to be there, they demonstrated service by themselves, painting. So our coaches got up there, did some work, and we appreciated having a little height there. The good thing about the basketball team, you don't need ladders. So, right Coach, that's right, that's a good, good point there. So at the end of the day, we did celebrate, we had a great event, and I'd like to recognize a few of our Rotarians that are here, if I can please ask you to stand up. So Jesse, Billy, Eric, they were all big contributors to the project, a lot of the facilitation, they were there bright and early, so thank you. It is a project, again, as part of our Service Above South, it's something we hope and intend to continue to do next year. So Eric, we connected tonight to try to make this an annual project to help both the city, but really the community as a whole enjoy a park we're lucky to have. So thank you for letting us work with the project and supporting us on a great workday, so thank you.
Thank you guys so much. I especially like the discipline from the Pittman guys, still painting the THS blocks, blue and gold and not green and silver, so that was pretty good, I like that. But any questions or comments from the audience on this great project? No, we really appreciate our Parks and Rec staff, they're phenomenal, and they do a great job throughout the city, but we always need that boost from the community to help us out a little bit, and you see that throughout the community especially over at Donnelly Park. So thank you guys so much for helping out, and give the whole, all those guys in the back one more round of applause. Bigger question, how are you guys gonna do this season? Yet to determine, good, I like it, alright. Well, perfect, well, thanks so much, if there's no other questions, I'll turn it back over to Brent. Oh, it is, alright. I'll happily take the gavel back over. Alright, perfect, we're gonna move on to the Public Art Display, Mayor's Public Policy Art Award. Let me just tee this up before my good friend Jacob, who I just met yesterday, he helps us out with this. But as you guys know, I take, every year I take my salary and I put it into a public policy scholarship over at Stan's Lost. The first recipient tackled looking at our bus systems, making them more efficient, more effective throughout our community. The next group, there's actually two gentlemen who are taking it, and actually created an app for all students to actually be able to have on their phone all the discounts and loyalty programs for downtown businesses, for specifically college students. To help bridge that town gown divide so that they're coming downtown and they're able to go to Hawks Grill or Dust Roll and get a couple dollars off for a meal or partake in whatever special they're having. So this next time around, I've been talking with some folks over at Stan's Lost, and we decided to be a little bit more specific, and we decided to kinda hone in a little bit, and talk about how we jump-start a mural festival or mural program throughout the community. As you guys know, we have a lot of blank canvases around here, a lot of blank walls, and so I wanted to see through the art department if they had any ideas, and just so happened, Mr. Weigle, right, who just came here about a month ago, has some experience in Odessa, Texas, where he worked on murals and public art and different things, and so he's gonna do a little mini presentation, and I just wanted to kinda tee that up as to where the mayor's scholarship is gonna go this year, so, yeah. Jake, come on up. He did have to confess that even though he's new to Stan's Lost, he lives in Modesto and not Turlock.
Where?
Exactly, yeah, it's this little town up north, so hopefully he'll change that next summer and be back down here in Turlock.
Well, thank you for the invitation. I'm here on behalf of the dean, Jim Tuaio, but he did ask me to fill in specifically because of my experience. The last three years I was teaching at UT Systems School in Odessa, Texas, and happened to be one of the founding members of the Public Art Committee for the city of Texas. And so one of our first projects, really what we were looking at is, the public art was around in Odessa already. There had been some public art committees previously, but they had become defunct at some point. And so with the oil boom, about a third of domestic oil comes out of Odessa, Texas, so we had close, over three quarters of a million dollars in funding just through a 3% hotel motel tax, which was pretty incredible. So we worked and we actually developed a large master plan that went through everything from sessioning, commissioning work, how that went through the city itself, working with the city council, working with the Parks and Rec Department, and identifying different locations that public art could be created in Odessa, Texas. This was one of the first projects we did, was it was a WPA Works Project Administration mural that was in the post office, and since it's owned by the US Postal Service, we were the only, was it, we were the only city municipality that was funding the, basically this was cleaned up. So we spent the money from this public art committee to essentially clean and restore this painting, this large mural that resides in the museum there now, as a Tom Lee. This is just a real simple example of the flow chart, the way that we had structured the master plan for the city, for the Public Art Committee. Again, everywhere from defining the opportunities that were around in Odessa, all the way to the final maintenance and conservation of sculptures, murals, things like that. And really, we started out, you know, this, the Mayor's Public Policy Initiative is a great example of how to identify locations in Turlock that are a great place to start with this. And we started out asking the public what they wanted to see, and so these are some of the questions that we asked them, we had multiple forums, workshops and surveys. What we found were people were most interested in public art, those interactive and playful, things that were for beautification, aesthetics, existing artwork that reflected particular stories, whether that was for Odessa or the population there. And then other things like parks and walking trails, corridors for the park, for the city itself. And then we also found that color diversity in design and interactivity were the significant features that the population were interested in. And so some of the other projects that we used were things like these electrical boxes that you find on street corners. This is a kind of a big thing that's going around nationally, is how do you find artists, national artists, that decorate these, and these were skinned using a local advertising agency. This is, this is an ongoing project, and unfortunately I left for a fortunate position here at Sand State, but an existing structure, this was a $125,000 project to bring in an artist nationally-recognized to create something, some kind of artwork out of this existing structure. So public art opportunities that are located really anywhere can be new construction. A lot of times, this can be funded through a 1% for the arts kind of policy, gateways and corridors, parks, civic and community buildings, plazas and lobbies and memorials. And I just have some, I'll go through these pretty quickly, but just some examples. It's not just murals, it's not just sculptures, that can be public art. They can be things like lighting, so architectural lighting for at night. Finding spaces that are underdeveloped, like the Underpass, for instance, is a really good example. Interior spaces like lobbies. And then getting to murals, so finding basically blank canvases that are around the city that either an artist who's particularly interested in murals or finding a group of people, in this case, will be working with students, not only in the art department, but throughout the university community as well, that develop some kind of ideas. Again, getting groups of people who are interested together to design and then actually paint these. And it's good for civic engagement, right? Functional aesthetics, so things like guardrails or existing structures, and again, beautification of these kind of elements can be really important. I love this example on the left of the electrical tower. Different arches, again portals, gateways to the community, to specific venues can really create a nice sense of identity for that. Creative things like, again, these are railings for bridges. I was up in Sacramento last weekend and saw the parking garage, how they, they're doing the metal fabricated decorations for that. Even things like painting crosswalks can be a place for this beautification, mosaics on walls. And then getting into kind of parks, again, the functional in terms of designing, it could be bike racks, it can be benches, memorials. And then what we, what I would consider to be traditional sculpture, but just in terms of sculpture, whether that's permanent, or a lot of communities will develop what's called a temporary sculpture competition, where a certain stipend is paid to an artist, typically a thousand dollars, maybe 2,000, for the artist to loan their work, their sculpture to the city for a year, two years, and that's a rotating juried competition that can create some really interesting sculptures that then go away, so it's... And again, these are maybe more permanent. Sculpture gardens as well, so using existing parks. I was in Oxford, Mississippi for a while there too, and they received some funding from the city council and took an existing park and did the same thing, a juried sculpture competition that rotated around. And then there's also temporary art examples, so the mural festival would be a really great example of this. In some cases, a lot of times you'll have night, some kind of night festivals that do, working with video or light, this is, you know, kind of funny example. There's yarn bombing was a big thing for a while, where somebody comes and uses yarn to create these structures or sculptures. You know, and really, these are places for people to be engaged with the community, be engaged with spaces that aren't usually, are overlooked. Again, it can be a specific event. These are parklets, which were started in San Francisco about 15, 20 years ago. And when I was in Odessa, as we were gathering momentum and trying to get public interest in the Public Art Committee and the policy, I worked with students to create some of these parklets and these different events, and that was a really great way of, again, exposing the role that art can play in the community. So again, a few examples of parklets, which are kinda taking over a temporary parking spot. Again, light festivals, this is Spark Festival in Minneapolis. So these are structures that are set up for a weekend and then they're taken down, grain silos, projecting videos onto that, so, yeah. So I'll just sum up, like I said, I'm pretty excited to have the students involved with this kind of project. I think that the civic engagement is a really important aspect. It's not just about making art, but finding ways that that can really enhance the city, and so, yeah, look forward to it.
Absolutely.
Any questions?
No, I think, I really appreciate it, and it was great to talk to you, Jake. So of course, my kind of one-dimensional thinking was, I was thinking murals, right? Like paint on a wall, and then now, obviously, you guys see there's so many other aspects, and so you could almost get paralyzed by so many different things you could do.
Sure.
So Brent, as the Chair of the Park Commission, I'm gonna be working with you, and we'll kind of brainstorm and work with Jake to see how we come up with some sort of community involvement as well as student involvement. But like I said, the Mayor's Public Policy Scholarship is really gonna be kind of seed money to start this. Then we're gonna be looking into the, you know, hopefully, private sectors and different individuals that wanna come together and maybe also put some money towards it, or some time and effort towards it, or wanna have their wall become part of this project, or their space become part of this project. We also have some great public spaces. So this is a long-term effort, this is not gonna be something that's one month and we're done. It's gonna be something that Jake's gonna be working on for 30, 40 years, so it's gonna be really good. No, I'm teasing. But no, I just think this is great, and it's, you know, the fact that we could have videos played up on silos, I just think is pretty cool. I mean, just the ideas are limitless, so.
Yeah, and I will say that, you know, identifying all these sources, it was the same thing in Odessa. It's like, where do you focus your energy and the resources that you have? And so obviously, that's where we really went with the surveying, figuring out what the community was interested in. Some of this stuff doesn't work in Odessa, Texas, it wouldn't work in Turlock, but it's still a place to look for certain opportunities, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in fact, if you guys saw the survey results, a lot of them, I think, would actually overlap pretty nicely. I mean, that would probably be the answers, you'd see the aesthetics, the different aspects that I think the community in Turlock would like, but. I don't know, is there any comments or questions or feedback now to the public as well? Anyone have any feedback? Yeah?
First, welcome to Turlock then.
Thank you.
Mississippi and Texas is crazy. Turlock's a better destination for you. I'm excited, I used to, my first civic commitment to this city was on the Arts Department, or the Arts Commission, so this is just like so energizing to look at it and think, okay, what, where could we put that? Ooh, I like that over there, I'm thinking in my mind already, right? Obviously, I'm just a one person here, but I think that you're gonna bring so much vision to everyone that they can just go with that and make something that's not even on here yet, and I look forward to that.
Great, so, yeah.
What kind of involvement did you experience or did you pursue with respect to other public agencies within the neighborhood? In other words, we have TID, we have the school district, we have the university in addition to city facilities. Any kind of experience along those lines?
Yeah, I mean, actually, what ended up happening was, like I said, we did have student involvement. That was something that was really important to gain some momentum for this. And it also gives students an opportunity to realize what else is out there, other than just being in the studio by themselves too, but what's, what's TID?
Oh, yeah, you're from Modesto.
Yeah, don't say that.
Turlock Irrigation District, they're basically a water public utility.
Well, we did work with the Parks and Rec, and in fact, the way that we structured, the way that the Public Art Committee was, or the way that we structured that committee was to have members from Parks and Rec on there, as well as the city council, the city planner was on there. And so it was important for us to collaborate with everybody to make sure that we were planning things out appropriately. Other than that, I mean, we, in terms of like the irrigation, I don't know, I don't know, I'm sure there's ways that we could certainly collaborate and make sure that, you know, agencies are involved.
We'll help guide you through that.
One of the things that I really wanted to do that I didn't, was we have pump jacks everywhere, they didn't in Odessa, and I wanted to get those painted, but you know, that wasn't the case.
Well, once you get down to Turlock from there, we'll introduce you to somebody.
Absolutely, yeah. No, it's one of the things, I was backpacking in Brazil in grad school, I think, and they did a competition, like you said, where about a dozen artists each got a cow, but kinda, it wasn't life-size, a little smaller, but they could paint it, and they really did a good job of painting it anywhere they wanted, and they just put them throughout their whole kind of main strip. And so you'd walk by and there'd be these cows with like all the, the Brazilian flag was all over one, and then the other one would be all this like psychedelic colors. It was just really neat to see, just, it was temporary, it was, you know, six months to a year. It was pretty cool.
Sure.
So maybe we'll have some cows, yeah, Sandra. That's actually, what sparked this idea was that it was a mural festival, and they start off and they kinda show, an artist would show exactly what their render would be, they'd be, already know what their space is, and it's basically like, go! And then you kinda have your seven days, 10 days, and then you can all celebrate at the end, but yeah, that's a really neat idea.
Absolutely. We started, speaking of the mobile app too, that was something that we had started developing as well, is mobile app for locations, so visitors come to Turlock and they wanna see where the public art is. They can simply look up the app, there's a national app for that, a couple of them, and so that allows for better access to the location, so.
Comments or questions or input? I think this topic is gonna be coming up regularly, and again, the Park Commission definitely, I'm kinda looking to you guys to help spearhead this, but I definitely wanna be involved as well, and I'm so glad the partnership with Stan's Lost is strong, so thank you so much for tackling this.
Well, thank you for being here for a month, it's, I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here, so, and I look forward to living in Turlock and...
Yeah, 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 well, it's, I didn't realize we need to have like a trivia questions for like presenters, like what is TID? Do you know what, yeah, no, perfect. Alright, well, thank you so much.
Okay, we have public participation for Parks and Rec. No public participation, a declaration of conflicts of interest and disqualifications from the agenda. Then we'll go ahead and go to item six, which is Parks, Art, Recreation Commission Chair and Staff Upgrades in the First Village Community Garden. We had talked before about earth's arguments, and started to research a little bit, and then it sort of stopped because it's kinda difficult to find spaces to be able to do this. So we had talked, meetings about the possibilities, and now you are all districts re-elected, that perhaps we could locate you helping us locate places within your particular district that perhaps might be a suitable place for the regards. But that's almost putting the cart before the horse, and I think in the last meeting, we realized that it's probably a better strategy to call a set of guidelines to be able to write us on this. I hope there are a number of cities that had earth regards, and they would definitely establish a lot of parameters that I think we need to look at and then present to you for your approval. If you're so willing, still, to participate in the earth regards, and take the worst possible together, but I think that's the direction that we should be able to go, or add on, with a couple of members, and then...
I think it's a good course of action, any comments or anybody? Yeah, go.
Yeah, Brent, I know we, you've discussed this a couple of times, and yeah, so I'd be interested to see your plan when you put it together, 'cause I know there's lots of spaces where we can look. Actually, the ones I was looking at were not in my district, but right there on Gear Road, I saw a couple of really nice spots that would be, look good, so I'd be interested to see the final write-up.
A volunteer from the council that wants to work with Brent on that? Absolutely. Perfect. Great.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Chair, Council and Commission. Just wanna give you an update on the Turlock Regional Sports Complex feasibility lighting study. Since I've started working on this project, we sent out 390 notifications to residents yesterday. Our plan is to have a public meeting at our next regularly-scheduled commission meeting, which is October 11th at 6:00 PM at Turlock, or Pittman High School Cafeteria. During that meeting, we'll go over with the residents kind of our plan for the lighting. The plan is six poles on each of the two fields on the south side of the sports complex. And this is, this is the first of several community meetings that we'll probably have. We just wanna let them know what the project is, what our goal is. We have a rough estimate of about $263,000 for the equipment and the lighting, not including labor or the installation. As staff, we're also looking at what the lights are, they're gonna be 50% more cost-effective than the lights we currently have out at Pittman, which we would expect because they're more than 20 years old. And once we get deeper into it, we'll be able to talk to the community about the way the lights are set up. As I look through this, they have 50% less spill and glare light that come off of them. So when you're talking about new sports lighting, you're not looking at the old ones that are just glare that go everywhere. So when you get into the neighborhood, you're gonna see these are more very directed into the sports field, and being on the south side, I think it's really gonna help the community understand. With these lights, once we get this study done, it'll allow us to add about 32 teams to our city softball rec league, equalling about $48,000. It'll also open up a lot of opportunities for us to have expanded tournaments. We don't have an estimate on that yet, but with the extra fields and the lighting, we'll definitely be able to add additional tournaments at that time. If you guys have any questions on where we are on that study, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Any questions or comments? I'm glad you guys are pursuing this, this has been objected for a while, it's just good.
Yeah, we're pretty excited to get this project moving along. Thanks, Brent.
Thanks, Eric.
There it is, okay. Good evening, Mayor and Chair, Commission and Council. That's kind of a mouthful there, okay. I am very excited to present to you a concept that we are currently working on, and this was something that Commissioner Rolander brought forward for consideration, and it is the concept of bringing more fitness-related equipment into our parks and our facilities. And so what we're gonna present to you is a link to a nationwide initiative that's being launched that really has sort of sparked a deeper conversation... equipment, you know, throughout the community. And so this is just one example. It's kind of on the spectrum. It's a, I think, a really sort of high-reaching initiative, but we can, we can do it to that level or we can do it to, you know, a lesser level, depending on, you know, what the community says they would like to see happen and what ultimately council and the commission would recommend. And so I'm going to give you this, this presentation and I hope that it will spark some conversation because what we're hoping to do is just get some feedback from both of these bodies tonight on whether or not this is something that we should pursue. What I can tell you is that there is definitely a nationwide trend where you're seeing more cities adopting more fitness-focused equipment. You're almost seeing a complement to the youth-focused equipment where in concept, you could have kids playing on the playground and mom and dad working out kind of in a nearby vicinity where everyone's sort of getting some physical activity at the same time. That was the concept that we had presented for the Montana Park location. And so as part of phase two for that, that project, we have identified a fitness-focused piece of equipment that will be flanking the playground at some point. So this, again, is just an example of a nationwide initiative that's happening, and I'm hoping it will spark some, some comment from you after you watch it.
This is why I'm here, to make this happen all, this is why I'm here, to make this happen all across the country. Let's make world-class fitness free for everyone. Hi, I'm Mitch Manadjit, founder of the National Fitness Campaign. National Fitness Campaign started in 1979 when we invented the fitness courts. Our first two fitness courts were at Stanford and San Francisco, and the mayor and Wells Fargo bank backed behind the program. And over a period of 10 years, we opened fitness courts in 4,000 cities across America. We're introducing a new fitness court for the 21st century and launching a new national fitness campaign. The fitness court will allow you to use your own body weight to get a perfect workout. Our seven movement, seven-minute system allows you to get a full-body workout in just seven minutes. 45 seconds of work at each station, followed by 15 seconds of rest. The system is progressive, so people at all fitness levels can use it. Easy or hard, it'll work for everyone. And it's adaptable as well. You can come to the fitness court and do any workout. If you're training for a tough medal, if you're running a marathon, the fitness court will work for you. You can download our mobile app, learn our routines and take some of the fitness challenges. This will allow you to compete on the fitness court against your own personal times and against your friends. You can also match the music on your phone to your workouts to make it a lot more fun. We're joining forces with Fit Radio to build fitness courts in 100 cities and schools across America in 2018. Fit Radio provides $10,000 for every $20,000 we raise. Each time we do this, we open a new fitness court. Our first new fitness court has been at Marina Green for more than three years now. Tens of thousands of people have used it, and hundreds of people from around the country and around the world have contacted us to get one.
I think it's amazing.
I love the fact that this is here and it's been here. It's awesome, you can do a ton of different kind of workouts here.
Perfect spot, random arena.
But you can come out, enjoy the views, get the fresh air.
National Fitness Campaign is a social enterprise and I take no salary, so all the money we raise goes directly to building fitness courts across America. We envision fitness courts joining basketball courts and tennis courts as essential elements of healthy infrastructure in cities and schools. We're excited to work with you to build fit communities. Join with us and let's make world-class fitness free for everyone.
Any questions? Comments?
Questions, comments? Yeah.
I'm in. Let's do this. Fitness for everyone, I love it. I think it's beneficial in so many different ways, you know? It's expensive to be in a gym. This is interactive for your neighborhood people. Everybody will get to know each other on some level or something. There's, there's just a myriad of different partnerships that will be, happen because of this, and I think that it'd be really cool to bring it. Good idea.
So Brent and I, when we first kind of brainstormed over in this side room two months ago and with some staff, and looked at potential locations and looked at some things, but also looked at dollars and cents. So do we want to kind of talk about kind of roughly how this process works and what we'd be looking at? Do we have those numbers or?
Well, if we were to go with this exact system, they sort of lay out their, their proposal in terms of what it would cost. But I will, I will caution that the figures that they reference here, those are just for the equipment. Part of the city's obligation would be to prepare the pad that it would be placed on. And so there's additional costs that, you know, aren't quite discussed in this video. And so, you know, part of this discussion tonight was just to sort of get a sense if this was something that both of the bodies wanted us to spend some time on as staff to explore. And so I think that, you know, as you know, with our public project process, we would be subject to, to go out to bid. There are some nuances about this particular initiative that are somewhat unique in that they not only build it or bill it as a fitness amenity, but also it comes with this app and there's this whole sort of campaign that they're building their project around. Whether or not we can, you know, put something out to bid that sort of encompasses all of that so that we can, you know, kind of get multiple proposals, I'm not sure. I'd have to work with Mike Pitcock just to kind of understand how that works relative to the public contract code when we start getting into dollars and cents relative to the construction itself. But I think what we were, you know, really hoping is just to get a sense of, is this something we should, you know, move on in general? And so I mean, obviously, I've heard from, from the mayor and from you, Councilmember Boo Black, and I know our commissioners have already spoke about this and they're excited. It was really just to make sure that the two bodies were on the same page and that staff is excited to take it forward and start doing some exploring. And like I mentioned originally, this isn't the only, you know, piece of equipment out there. We have had conversations with this manufacturer and our challenge at this particular point, while it's very exciting and I think what they're doing is great, and according to them, they've got many cities across the nation that are, are jumping on board, so to speak. We don't have a lot of experience with them because they only have one amenity, and that's in San Francisco in the marina. So I can't pick up and call another city and say, hey, how's this working out? How do, how do you do with maintenance? Have you experienced any vandalism and how do you deal with that? So from a practical sense, those are the things that we always look at when we start evaluating new amenities and equipment, you know, what are the practical obligations that we're going to have to think about long-term from a maintenance perspective? And so, you know, I'm not saying that we shouldn't go with this or that we're not recommending that, but we just haven't done enough research to be able to make a sound recommendation at this particular point. But, you know, given the discussion tonight, we're happy to move forward with doing that research.
So my initial thought was that I was envisioning something like Foster Farms doing it for their, their workers, the hospital where the outer lining area, the seniors would be able to utilize it. I wasn't thinking we, the city, were going to purchase those necessarily, but encourage and try and get that to start becoming more within all the districts and different sides of town.
So more of a private initiative?
Sure.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Yeah. Councilman Menace, Eric.
Yeah, I was thinking something, I was thinking nonprofit groups in town, like Sunrise Rotary over there. But I think this would be something that we get many of these groups to stand beside, behind. I like the free part. How many people in here belong to gym? Pay 10, 20 dollars a month? How often do you go? Okay. Yeah. One guy. Okay.
Calling us out like that, I just don't know.
Hey, you know, so something like this would be free and it's there when you want it, when you need it, you know? I, I like it. I like to see us look into it. But again, I'd like the, to have it financed by someone other than the city.
Got it.
Yes. Thanks, Mayor.
And I think that the, the fact that the installation in San Francisco is what we can find out from, familiarity with California contract law, et cetera, et cetera, it'd be a perfect fit for, from that standpoint. Any restrictions that we're going to encounter, they would already have encountered themselves.
Yes.
So, no, I'm all for this.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I think that it's good. I think that we should keep all our options on the table with strictly private, public-private partnerships, seeing what we can do also. Because I think one of the things would be great if, for example, Emmanuel or Foster Farms picked it up, but at the same time, we want to make sure that this is accessible to all. And so maybe there's something that we can kind of, kind of a hybrid to that effect and looking at how San Francisco did or other cities did, I think would be really smart. So yeah, I think that, I think this council wants us to explore it and, yeah, staff can look into it. And Brent, if you want us to keep championing this and through the Park Commission, I think that'd be great. Rope me into it anytime. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Perfect.
I did a vision that would be like located along the transportation bike trails. Ride your bike, get off, it would be riding your bike. That was part of what we discussed before.
Right. Yeah. I think there's lots of options out there. I think you're going to have to uniquely kind of see how that all fits in together. So that'd be great.
That breaks us down to Council and Commissioner. Comments? So we'll start with Park. Any comments, any additions?
Glad you asked. Hey, thanks again, guys. Let's give them a round of applause today. Not only did they help repair Donnel Park, but they sat through 45 minutes of a park and a city council meeting, so that's good. Sorry. Any city council comments or updates? Yes, thanks, Mayor.
I'll just say some pretty exciting options with several different programs. So thanks for spiriting those along. Great, it's great stuff.
Hey, round of applause for Parks and Recreation Commission.
I'd have most by the council. All those say unanimously, all those in favor say aye. All right, we're adjourned. Thanks so much, everyone, for coming in. We'll come back about 6:01.